About the rest of your board.
Yeah.
I knew Romeo.
Is she?
Oh Romeo's not coming.
It's like, oh. Yes, we do. So every time they turn, she's like two, a little bit like, doop, doop, you know, so funny. They both laugh.
Yay.
You're laughing now. Wait, was she six months old?
Yeah, you were in last time, in this room.
No.
No.
I've never been in this room before.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm going in straight. Oh, good. Her parents probably.
They said as soon as you get.
We've been six, one minutes away, so.
We'll be down here on the ground.
Yeah, we have.
With her parents, so I really. I mean, I was. Travis is crazy today. Okay. I'm from Ireland. You're in there. It's weird. Is it right now?
No, I'm trying to just.
She's like. I'm just. I'm ten year.
Oxford, A.
And then. Wow. We say that. So you really had to walk.
Did you? Yeah, all of a sudden, that's one.
Of course, she's nice. I'm fixing up for you in her hand.
I really can't.
That doesn't make love separate.
I sure did. The Quebec check.
Do you ever bring that up now? We should.
I think we.
Just.
We're ready. We didn't know what he was talking about.
It's like, it's a lot.
Oh.
Oh. I think. He's actually with us.
But you.
She's like, oh, I think. She's very cute. Yeah, yes.
I think we want to have a second.
Okay, I'm gonna, uh. Welcome to here, I'm just gonna welcome everybody to the five twenty B A unit. And we're doing the five two weeks.
I'm glad you're here. To the five of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States. Why nation under God. In this world with the unity of justice for all.
Okay, I'm gonna ask for anybody to introduce yourself.
Hi, Mary Gore.
Here he is.
Teresa Bascom.
Uh, Terry Barnes.
Bonnie, we're on the weekend. I'm a Kenny Landry's clerk.
So I'm gonna read the rules of, uh.
Yeah.
I gotta read it. I thought I had it all. Okay, the, uh. So children, the general call of this meeting, uh, section. And members of the board will ask questions at any point during the testimony. Any person who appears shall be required to state their name and their address and their affiliation with the case. Any member of the board through the chairman may request the parties to the case to speak a second time. Any party of the case wants to ask a question of another party to the case must do so through the chambers. Advocates shall be called to be present, present their case, and those abuddies in favor shall be allowed to speak. The abuddies in opposition shall be allowed to speak. The board will hear any evidence that pertains to the case from other parties that wish to speak. The applicant and those in favor shall be allowed to speak and rebuttal. Those in opposition shall be allowed to speak and rebuttal. Chair, uh, the hearing shall be declared closed and the board will, uh, discuss it and take a vote. And, um. So I'm gonna open up the hearing, this public hearing. We'll open up the public hearing for case twenty-five zero zero six V A Brady, twenty-five case rules. And the applicant is, application is from Dennis F. Brady and Matthew Brady requesting a variance of article two. Section C two E. Definition of law, C definition of lot envelope, guarding and zoning pardon. The sub-division of law, with a lot envelope less than fifty feet wide. This is going to be twenty-three, four, eight, forty. Probably more is for the eight case rules, ignoring the identified tax fact, sorry, lot two. Thank you, Chair. And I'd like to recuse myself of my relationship with my family. Okay, so you're gonna recuse, okay. Well, I have to, um. We have four, well, we have four, tell you the three. So I'm gonna appoint Mary, uh, Holwood as, uh, ultimate assist on this hearing to hear this case. So that would give us four, but. Now, you have, uh, the right five board members. And so you can either go on with the case, or you can, you can go through the whole hearing and at the very end, you can take. No, I want Holwood or, or not. And I am on the abuddies list. I, I was, the last time this case, there was another time this case was in the court. I'm on the abuddies list, I, I, I really don't even, I think I write an abut at the rerun, right? To me.
Yeah.
Because I needed that. And I have no interest in the case, I have no, nothing to benefit, so I'm not gonna recuse myself. Which I did last time. Okay, so.
Well, fair enough, I would, don't mind continuing with four.
Okay.
If.
We did that, Governor.
Excuse me?
We're good, Mr. President.
Okay, well, thank you. Uh, for the record, Peter Landry, Landry Surveying, representing the Bradys that you mentioned, one the owner, one the applicant. Uh, they are related. Uh, Matthew, again, is a native of Nottingham, he lives at the south end of Nottingham Lake. And he has an opportunity to, uh. Purchase a piece of land from his uncle Dennis, who has the acreage that abuts on Case Road, as well as Robin Hood Lane. We're here tonight seeking variance relief for, um, a, for not so much a lack of the thirty K envelope, but a portion of the thirty K required lot envelope is less than fifty feet. There's some verbiage in the zoning that talks about this thirty K not bottlenecking or hourglassing down to a less than fifty. In this case, we have more of a handle instead of an hourglass, but it is in fact less than fifty feet for a section. Somewhere around two hundred and something by forty-three, so. That, in my experience with the board over the last few years, is, uh, that they do, they like to cut off that thirty K measurement at the narrowest point of fifty feet. So, we're here tonight to seek relief, and I'll go with the, the details later on, but I wanted to somewhat start, with the idea that the, the state of New Hampshire is facing, as we know, anybody in the business skyrocketing building costs and housing shortages. The government has stepped in over the years and mandated, uh, what we'd call statewide zoning, uh, in the, in the area of ADUs or accessory dwelling units. Old school, we used to call them in-law apartments. There was a time when they were looked on by town boards as a negative. Uh, no, well, you could, you, you almost sneaking in a in-law apartment of sorts. Uh, again, the, the state recognizing that, uh, there's a housing shortage, stepped in a few years ago and, um, mandated ADU housing for every town, uh, which also encouraged some multifamily housing. Needed to be addressed, every town had to sit down and rewrite their zoning to blend in with the new state law for ADUs. And of course, I, right now, I understand, I don't keep up with it as much as others, but I understand right now that we're allowed one ADU per, per lot unit, and there are other conditions, and the state is now looking to allow two ADUs, so they're progressing in that direction. I read an article, March twenty twenty-five, Senate's passed some bills overriding local barriers for housing. They're specifically looking at having a statewide minimum lot size, uh, for single-family homes of eighty-eight thousand. That's a little over two acres. And with lots that had water and sewer, they'd be as small as a half an acre. And, uh, like the ADUs, the towns and cities, if, if this all goes fully past, we'll be looking at having to adopt and change their zoning. And I'm sure there'll be some discussions and, and differences on that. Uh, with some of these towns in the area having three acre zoning, they may be mandated to, to drop it to two. So, that's a little briefing on with, I believe the state is heading, um, swinging back to the thirty K, which we're here for. I have worked, uh, for almost forty years in Land surveying in the area, uh, starting out in Exeter, all the surrounding areas, through the eighties, through the nineties. Came into Nottingham in the two thousands, and here we are in twenty twenty-five, how time flies. And, uh, but I gotta be honest, I've looking, I've looked through a lot of, uh, all these towns' regulations in the process, and I'm not aware of any other town around here. Uh, and I, and there may be some, but I'm not aware of many that, that I've worked in that have a thirty thousand square foot building envelope. That's almost three quarters of an acre. So I said, well, let me just take the peek and see what's going on around here, so. I, I tried to get all the surrounding towns and some of these towns I've recently worked in, just as a comparison to what your neighboring towns are up to. And I went to Barrington, because I thought, well, jeez, I'm looking for two acre, two hundred foot lots as a comparison. I go to Barrington and I recently find out they're now two point nine eight acres. They've gone up to three acres with two hundred and fifty foot of frontage. But that's what I was looking at, is how do they look at this lot envelope? And with a three acre lot, they're looking for basically, uh, sixty thousand, like, uh, free of poorly and very poorly drained. Um, within that sixty K, which is within the three acres, uh, boundary, they're looking for a thirty-five contiguous upland. No discussion of setbacks and exclusive of setbacks, just within the boundaries of the lots, you have to have a, a chunk of upland, like we used to. Brentwood, another town, I just got done doing a subdivision last year, and I kinda chuckled. They have a subdivision regulation that requires a building block as a comparison to our lot envelope of forty by eighty rectangle. Shown within anywhere on the lot, within the boundaries, I, I mean, within the setbacks. Epping, I couldn't find anything in their zoning definitions for building a lot envelope. Deerfield, uh, nothing, couldn't find anything. Northwood, uh, they do have a reference for building a lot envelope, I couldn't find, no, they didn't have anything in their subdivision, I mean, in the definitions, but in their subdivision regs, they talk about the lot shall contain contiguous areas. They don't tell you how much, no square footage, but just contiguous areas of developable land, such as a driveway building, water supply sewage, and other improvements can be constructed without filling wetlands. So that's, that's Northwood, uh, northerly neighbor. And then Raymond, I wasn't able to find anything on building lots. You know, so again, most of these towns in the area, they, they stick with the fact that you have a two hundred foot lot and a two acre, two hundred foot of frontage and a two acre lot, and, you know, the setbacks yield to the, where the buildable areas are. Yes, in Brentwood, uh, they want a forty by eighty rectangle that just could fit anywhere and not, you know, within the setbacks. Yeah.
Would be the setback?
It, uh, just fits, usually doesn't, you could touch a setback line, you can't go into the setback, you just, it's almost like building a forty by eighty house.
Do they have a fifty foot setback?
No, twenty-five, seventy, well, they have a, they do match us on the road, they go seventy-five from the center line. Most cases, the roads are fifty foot wide, so twenty-five, and then the fifty, and then they have twenty-five on the side. And then, of course, they have matching setbacks for wetlands, fifty, and seventy-five for septic, so.
Rectangle building envelope, not a top, top, front shaped one, which is what this looks like to me.
What's that? So this one here, the forty by eighty, is, yeah, that's just a, I'm trying to find a comparison.
But you, yeah.
There isn't any, this is as close as I can get.
Well, what I'm saying is, you're criticizing the fact that we don't want it to bottleneck or go down less than fifty feet. This design that I see here is creating almost a plaque with a handle for the, for the lot.
The lot I'm talking, gotta get to, yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Which would not qualify as a rectangle.
Right, but what, what Peter's saying is that other, they only forty foot lot, right?
Yeah.
Forty-three, forty-four.
Right, I'm, I'm saying, yes, uh. If you're, what you're saying is, if this, if that lot were dealing with my lot was in Brentwood, I would be able to put a forty by eighty in the area that I'm looking for relief on tonight. Yeah, because I'm looking, the narrowest point is forty-three and change, I believe. Yeah, so I, and I'm two hundred feet, so I could put a forty by eighty in there, but I wouldn't, because I've got the area down below on the lot we're talking, gonna talk about tonight, it, that is plenty big enough to build on. You know, nobody builds a thirty thousand square foot house, and that's what this thirty K is, so that's what I'm, okay. Not yet, right, we're getting there, don't give him time. So. Um. And of course, I understand it is necessary, and we've seen it over the years, where, where towns have to update their zoning and such to meet the demands and the, and the needs of the town. Since the Nottingham zoning was enacted in March of nineteen eighty, there's been thirty-six amendments to the town zoning. Changes over the years pertaining to the original simple two hundred by two hundred square foot for building, which worked fantastic for years, up until, I remember, we're still using it, and, well, it probably got, it got a change somewhere in the mid-eighties, they added the sixty K. And we'll get to all that, I'll show you some examples. And then that sixty K that got changed in the mid-eighties stayed till early, early two thousands. It seemed to work, and I'll show you how they measured it differently to where we are now, that's what this whole exercise is about, so. And I'm gonna show you some examples, so years ago, they had the simple two hundred by two hundred square foot for building. Now, that was designed to keep rectangular lots. That's, because if you didn't, if you didn't have that, uh, that, that square, then you'd end up with some really parallelogram or weird angled lots, and you wouldn't be able to get that square in there, and people would be building on other lots and such.
Who's over there? Criteria.
What's that?
Can you go with the criteria? I know.
You mean the five? I'd like to get there after, just so you understand where the thirty, I mean, I know I gave it to you all in writing, I don't have to read this whole thing. Okay, well, I mean.
I, I, I did, I, I read it.
Well, you may have, and, uh, so, you, if everybody's read it, then, then you may all understand that the whole purpose is just to try to give you an idea, if you were interested, of where, where we are today with the thirty thousand, and let's, I'll go right into the, uh.
Just saying this to you, the, 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 or town ordinances are not even written by this board.
I know.
The planning board puts them forward as, um, articles for us to vote on at the town meeting. It's the town's people who approve or disapprove of. So if you or anybody else out there wants to change these things, you need to speak to the planning board, get it on a ballot, and get your neighbors to change it. Because arguing with us over what is in our ordinance doesn't change anything except for maybe one case here or there. It doesn't change what you're arguing with us about.
So I understand what I'm here for. I thought I just would have a little bit of time to, to talk about how we get to, we don't have to. I put all this in writing, matter of fact, all the five criteria in writing. If you wanna just, you want me to go through those, though? I will.
You, you need to, for the record.
Okay, let's do it, let's go right to the five criteria. Not a problem. So, you all understand why we're here, and like I, like I explained, I think it's pretty clear, and the plans speak for themselves, I believe. We do have the thirty K, but we do not have, we have that one section that's a little, that does not meet the, uh, the fifty foot, excuse me. So, we'll go through, and because of that, we need relief from the zoning. Granting the variance would not be contrary to public interest, because, well, the rural character of the neighborhood is not altered, or is the general health, safety, or welfare of the public threatened or affected. In this case, allowing a slightly narrower than required lot envelope does not have any adverse effect on the public interest. Number two, in the very, if the variance was granted, the spirit of the ordinance would be observed, because, according to the regulations, the purpose of the lot envelope is to designate a thirty thousand contiguous square foot upland buildable soil, which is being designated as suitable area that can meet all local and state requirements, shall also be adequate width and depth, so as not to create an hourglass effect of less than fifty at its narrowest point on any newly created lot. If the spirit of the ordinance is to create a buildable lot with town frontage, then the ordinance is being observed. If the variance were to be granted, the outcome of the proposed new lot created would be a similar size, shape, and keeping in the rural character of the town. Therefore, in this case, the spirit of the ordinance would be observed. Number three, granting the variance would do substantial justice, because there's more than enough buildable area for the improvements to be placed on the proposed three acre lot. Before the recent twenty twenty-five zoning change, the thirty K that we're talking about really for included both the house and the septic area, which made a little more sense than it does now. Now, the septic system is not part of, does not have to be a part of the thirty K, just the house. Again, nobody builds a three quarter acre house. So, if the variance is granted, the values of the surrounding properties would be diminished, because the property is surrounded currently in zone residential agriculture, allowing for single family, which is how the applicant intends on using the proposed new lot. If the variance is granted, in pending, uh, board of planning board approval, the town has minimum building codes to assure any new home is built to acceptable standards. Additionally, zoning requirements are already in place to protect neighborhoods, i.e. from junkyards, et cetera. There's no evidence that this property will diminish the value of abutting properties. We'll get on to number five, unnecessary hardship. Five A, owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. Denial of the variance would result in undue hardship, because, A one, no fair or substantial relationship exists between the general public's purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of the provision, because we're here, as you can see from the plan, primarily, not because we don't have any area, not because we don't have enough, enough fit for building for two lots to have thirty K. We're not because of the frontage, we've taken care of that on Robin Hood, and there's more than enough frontage on Case Road. We're here because of trying to create the second lot with the location of the existing dwelling. Okay, that's Dennis's house on Case Road. Where it's located, you have to allow for fifty feet for Dennis to the lot line. Then you have to allow for an additional fifty feet for the new lot, all the way around the boundaries, and therefore, by elimination, you know, you just don't have the fifty feet, because of the house location, you're down closer to forty-four, six feet short of the requirement. So, that is part of the hardship, and then two, the proposed use is reasonable, one. Like the proposed lot, the surround, like this proposal, the surrounding properties are also single-family homes, that's what we're proposing. The entire thirty K lot building envelope is not needed, from a practical standpoint, not a regulatory standpoint, clearly understand that, because there is sufficient area for the construction of all necessary future improvements. And then B, explain how, if the criteria in sub-paragraph A are not established, an unnecessary hardship will be deemed to exist if, and only if, owing to special considerations of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. The property cannot be reasonably used in strict conformance with the ordinance. And a variance is therefore necessary to enable a reasonable use of it. So we're here for. As mentioned, the location of the existing dwelling limits the ability to place the proposed lot line in a location to provide each lot with the required thirty K, uh, by definition, and due to the existing dwelling location, uh, the remaining land with the, with the house there has fifty-three thousand, uh, buildable area. I would like to just give you one more example, we're very brief, I know I've cleaned up all five, but just so the board has an understanding of what this thirty K, I know it's a number, but what it kinda might mean. So as an example, with your permission, I'd like to, as a comparison, when you're regarding the thirty K, there are two different types of subdivision in town, we have a conventional subdivision in one hand, two hundred foot of frontage, two acres, and, and the thirty K inside. And then we have a open space or a cluster, reduced buildings, reduced lot sizes, reduce, reduce frontage, open space area. But at the end of the day, you're still building a house on, on each of these lots, so. Just mentioned, a newly created conventional lot needs two acres, two hundred feet, fifty foot setbacks all the way around, twenty foot for the septic on the side, and it must include the, the thirty K lot envelope. So, on a perfect lot, flat gravel pit lot, no wetlands, no slopes, no aquifer, you would, you would need two hundred feet of frontage, minus the two fifties leaves you a hundred. Then you gotta go back three hundred feet, because a hundred times three hundred is thirty thousand. Then you gotta add the other fifty foot rear, so now you've got four hundred by two hundred. Well, it's like, almost close to, to two acres, so make it a little deeper, make it four oh eight by two hundred, and there's your thirty thousand in between there. So it's almost like the entire buildable area on a perfect scenario lot is thirty thousand. Now. You take an open space lot, and just for those who would rather look at a picture than listen to words, if you go to nine and nine A of the examples, the plans I sent you, you're gonna see that, if, if, if you look at a, a lot in town, and there's quite a few of them, a cluster or open space lot, the minimum lot size is thirty thousand square feet for the lot. Okay, and a hundred foot of frontage. Okay, so the example that I showed you is from a town approved lot. And I said, geez, I wonder how much lot envelope that they have on this, since the lot's only thirty thousand minimum. I wonder how much if I take out the setbacks, which everything is reduced, twenty-five foot setbacks instead of fifty, you know, thirty-five in the front instead of fifty. Makes sense, because the lot is reduced, but it still has a four thousand square foot septic reserve here, just like the conventional. And even though it shows a block on this example, the house will be a lot bigger, uh, because you gotta build a bigger house nowadays, because the lots are too expensive. But as a calculation, and I didn't put it in any of the stuff you have, the lot I have, uh, shown here only has twelve thousand one hundred square foot lot envelope. That's all, that's a comparison.
But there's a difference.
Okay, what is it?
Open space, you've got to have thirty-five, fifty percent of the entire.
Oh, I understand.
Acres.
That's a density, yeah, I understand.
And so this is totally different, open space.
Well, I'm just.
I don't know, that's apples and oranges.
Well, maybe, so here's what I'm thinking, and I would agree, density, but I'm not really talking about density. I'm talking about buildable lot envelope, like space, like elbow room, space, like you're gonna build a house on this lot. You're gonna build a house on a two acre lot of conventional, you're gonna build a lot on a, in, in a cluster. And you, the leach fields are just four, four K for each lot, and that's a, and this has a well on it, too. Just like, everything else is, is equal, this, somewhere on here, I know it's a poor copy, but there's a well, though it's up front. And of course, the well radius don't fit on the lot, they go everywhere. The point being is, buildable lot in town, and I understand the density, trust me. Buildable lot in town, and I understand the density, trust me. The density on a conventional is built into the two acre lot. The, the density is taken away on this because it's put into the open space, they're all equal, you wouldn't get a. Open space and how do you get to an open space, you do a, you do a conventional subdivision for density. That's how you get your, your total lots that you. So then you, then you just reduce everything and, and put it online, so it's always, that's apple for apple, that's how you do it. So that was what I wanted to bring up is, you know, that. The two buildable areas are not apple for apple, they're our apple and orange, they're totally different. Down on Robin Hood. Yeah, if you look at the topo sheet, it looks like you're looking at the clean sheet. Yeah, so I think the other that you'll find. Yeah, it shows a proposed driveway on Robin Hood. The what? Oh, the function? Well, that's just the way, the, the nature of the configuration of the existing lot. Okay, the reason our lot looks the way it looks, which is part of your question, why does it look like a handle? Is because of the existing house on the lot. Which is the house shown that's on the lot two. Because if that was built six feet closer to Case Road, we wouldn't be here. I would have the, everything, I would meet all the requirements. For the six, for the thirty K, so. It looks that way by default because you have to create the lot line off the house and then you have the existing boundary, yeah. Now, is it functional? Absolutely. I mean, because you're allowed your, your leach fields nowadays, we have. Got a little lax on that, we used to be fifty feet from the lot line and now we've gone to twenty. And you can see both setbacks, the twenty and the fifty, of course, I would never. You don't have the topo sheet, I don't believe, but I wouldn't put anything up in there because it's on the side of a hill. It's not a steep slope. For new ordinance, but it is a, it is a slope. And it wouldn't be practical, it's probably gonna act more as a buffer or as a density. As part of this lot with all the building being down below where it's flatter. Where we had dug test pits, suitable test pits and such.
Yeah, Pete, I am full part of the. Giving back to lot owners their land with all of our. But the. The truth of the matter is, no one comes before us. No one goes before them, they're in the. And argues to have all of these things changed, there's only people that come here that argue any of these points in this. And I get it that you have to for a case, but. If I wish people like you and the others that come here and, and nag at us over this stuff, make the changes. Do up, do up a petition, make signatures, let the changes go on the ballot. It would make things a lot easier for you.
Well, I, I'm looking at this a little differently, I. Teresa, it's. I look at every, every variance, it's a case by case. And some I would, you know, some of my examples I was going to show you, yes. You can, when you don't have like, what's hurting us on this, what hurt? What's hurting this subdivision from just being straightforward at this point is the existing house, that's the key, and if that house had fallen over that last winter. Then I could have moved the line over, but it's still standing. And, 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 and that was the thing, and we're here case by case, if that wasn't there, we wouldn't be here, we don't want, I don't wanna be here. And when I come in here though, you are the zoning board, so. You're gonna hear an argument, you're gonna hear the other side, so that's pretty. Yeah, it's very close, it's very close, Terry. I had debated. You know, there were some other questions of how do I present this, do I ask for reduced setback? And there's a different, number of different ways to have. You know, I, I guess I looked at, geez, we got the thirty thousand, it's just narrower in one spot. I thought the less of all the evils that I could have created to come here with that was, I thought, more practical. And less invasive, we'll end up with the fifty, every, the setbacks are still being upheld like the people want. And such, again. My, my opinion, I'm not quite sure if you ask this town, if they knew anything about the thirty K, they would tell you, they, they don't. I'm pretty sure, unless you go through the process, the planning board, nobody knows. So like you said, the people voted on it, yeah, they voted on it, they had no idea if they voted on it, what they voted on. Exactly, that's what I mean, yeah. Then make, and make the hourglass. I would, that's, I thought about it, I absolutely.
Both the lots in that area are like twenty four acres.
And yes, they would. We're three acres because I, if you look at the nitty gritty detail, we're an aquifer district, so that requires a three acre lot. Soils are fantastic. Do you have the topo sheet? Yeah, that has the four Ks for each. Yeah, I have the test pit logs on the plan and everything. Absolutely. Yeah, it's all sand and gravel out there.
So you got three acres, you, you can only get like thirty thousand. With the, you know, I mean.
Yes.
That shows you how much we heat up in.
Some of it's wet, but. Well, that, that example I gave you shows you get a two acre lot, you, when you get, you get thirty thousand.
Now, if you average, like you say, the other lots, fifty three thousand, so it's, it's well over the. But most of the people that come in here, they're, they're, you know, thirty thousand, thirty.
You mean the many, yeah, that, it's, you're gonna find, even though zoning's thirty thousand in town. Your state D E S based on soils and will, will boost you up to a larger lot size, minimum lot size. Maybe closer to fifty thousand. Oh, yeah, 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 but when you, the clusters. So usually your two acre zoning will supersede any D E S minimum lot size by sort of type. Absolutely, if, if the house had fallen over last winter. I'd move the lot line over and each lot would have had, it would be no brainer, we wouldn't be here.
I know, and you're already, it, it really, yeah, because when you look, I realize it's, it's the setbacks that really. Off that house are really, it cuts you in all areas.
Is, is there anybody in that place?
Yes, Matthew's uncle Dennis lives there. Wow, he'd build a new one, I don't know if you've, we're just, I don't know if you've seen that, did you do a sidewalk? All right, well, I guess the point being is if it was, it's in the way. Okay, if it was slid over, maybe we could, maybe the better word be slid over, not falling over. Is that better? If it wasn't where it is, exactly, there we go. I knew we'd agree. You never know, we've been working on this project for over a year, so. If you remember, we were here on another variance, yeah. Yes, we do. A handle. Which again, you know, it, it. It, it, it narrows down to the fifty, that's part of it, I understand, and that's why we're here. Which one's all the one up? Oh, uh, no, I don't believe that's private road, they, they've got the lot line, there was a survey, I think. You're talking about the one that's to the south here, right? Yeah, I got, I don't know why that's not labeled. Oh, okay. Well, that's the one then. Oh, it's not on the topo. Oh, there you go, got it. That's, I think that's a, I don't believe that's a town road, that wasn't, it's not on the town road list, I do have it. I think it's a private road, it's all part of that Nottingham Sherwood Forest development. Presumption of title, if we're gonna talk about title, but. If they, if it was to say. Maybe that's where the, technically, maybe that's where the line is, but. Twenty feet wide. Yeah, it's only twenty, some of those roads got lumped in on. Couple of years ago when the town accepted. Maintenance or whatever it was, class five roads turned a few of these into, but not, not, did bachelor was not included. I mean, you could drive down it, but your truck, you'll, you'll get all scratched up on the sides, but.
Okay, so we're all done.
Yes, well, we dug test pits are fantastic, that whole area is.
Yeah, I'm, I think the instruction was to say who I am and where I live. Yeah, sure, so hi. Sure, I'm, so I'm Mary Marqueto, so my husband and I own that little thirty two Robin Hood Drive. It says Marqueto in here. And it's one of the things I can read on this diagram, what I cannot read, maybe it's not there. Where is the driveway going to be? I only have one map. Oh, thank you.
And if you have the road frontage and everything, it's on Robin Hood.
Yeah.
And so here is the lot, my assumption it is going to be in that area, but I could be wrong, see right through here.
Right through there, okay, because I'm here, so the road, how.
I think here, if you're there.
Yes, I'm there, above me. Um, further down the, more north. More north, okay. Oh, okay. So it's not like the driveway comes and at nighttime, it's in my eyes. That's, that was a concern, um, so thank you, how nice of you to show me that, I'm going, I cannot see that. Oh, all right. Oh, yeah, it is, um. I mean, other than that. When we visualize, I can't visualize anything on this. Where this house will be, when I look out my window and there's a house there, I'm not really, it's not in my view. Right, I mean, it's because it's over, as you said, above. I'm just trying to picture it. Right. And Haley is, is our neighbor who, right, down there near where Bonzer's, you know, down there. Um, so it's across from them, not across from us. I'm, I'm not suggesting that would be terrible, but I'm just trying to visualize it. Okay. It's really. Oh, does it connect to Case Road, yes, it appears, does this connect to Case Road? That lot does. The rema, okay, well, that was the other, thank you, because the other. In my head was what about traffic? Does this greatly increase? Traffic doesn't appear that it would, it's a private home, it's a home, a single dwelling home.
Yes, he lives on the south end.
So he, because.
I think it's, might be like a Robin Hood extension or something.
It is an extension, oh, this, this fellow. He's the other way, so he meaning this gentleman Matthew who's gonna live. We don't know. Okay, I, I've been working so hard, I hardly know my, I know one neighbor, but anyway. Okay, thank you, that really was what we were just trying to visualize this, what this meant, and it's, it's a home, it's not a. I met Matthew, I met him because he was shooting, where it's his right to shoot, but I'm going, oh, is he gonna, is that what this is about, but it's not, it's about. Good. Thank you for the opportunity to just try and ask the questions, some of those questions were my husband's, he couldn't be here tonight, so.
How far is that offset, that's in quite a way.
Wow, when you. You look down the power line from your house, it's gonna be to the left into the woods. Probably a couple hundred feet, hundred fifty feet, two hundred maybe tops.
Because there's an easement there, I mean, baby, whatever it is, the electric company has the right to use the.
Yeah, they have an easement through there, yeah, they do. Yeah, that's at, that power line is actually the service line, just like the one you might have coming in off the main line to your house. But that's the service line to Dennis's house, it's like the, the average pole, service line you'd have running up your driveway. That, but it's coming in from the back of the lot to his house rather than up his driveway from Case Road.
Yeah, because his house is on.
It's just services his house.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, it's not like an overhead through easement of sorts. Right, and that's just his service line.
Oh, thank you. Good to know, I'm learning a lot tonight.
I'm going deaf, so I'm getting louder and louder. Yes, yeah, we'll do leave that up to the electric company, but I would assume he'd be coming off of that. Probably not, they're gonna, if they can make it happen, they'll make it happen, it's in the right location for him anyway. I believe unless you want me to go through the examples, I'm good. Okay, good, good. Thought it was interesting, that's all. It's changed.
And the open lot. Like you said, it is based on the number of two acre lots and then it's, and they should. So the density doesn't really change.
The density, that's how we write, exactly, it's all the same.
Okay, so I'm gonna. Post a public hearing and we'll discuss it. Are you buying with four, four hundred and stuff? Or do you want to support, or do you want to buy with four?
Well, let's see, we could end up with a tie. So that's the only negative, I guess. But if we did that, then how would you want to handle a tie? Would we be back maybe for, for, wait till you have a full board then? You'd be voting on it, I mean, would a tie, would I be able to come back? But without reapplying, right, just come back for a different. I mean, a tie would almost be like a, well. Oh, ties are no.
Well, it depends, you know, if somebody makes a motion to approve it, it's a tie. If no, if somebody makes a motion to deny it, it's a tie. Still, it doesn't go anywhere. So it just stays, you know, so it's, yeah, so it, it, um, yeah, so we could, we could continue the hearing until June.
You'll have a full board.
That's not a guarantee.
That's not guaranteed, we hope.
I know, this is the public hearing part of it. But I just wanted to say I appreciate all of you and all your time that you take to do this, and it makes me feel really good as first it was on six Robin Hood, very far down the other end, next to the Brady's. And, um, I also agree with Mr. Landry as far as I have a 32-year-old son who, you know, wants to build a home and in Massachusetts though. But, you know, just the idea of having young people in our town and being a part of the whole, I really love that, so.
Right, I mean, that is what this
Yes, yes, and he's a great kid, so I just wanted to put that out there.
Okay.
Okay, so if I come back in June, you want me to give you the show again? I mean, I understand. I didn't know if we could, we record it and all of that, if you'd be they could watch the reason that, you know, they watch it at home or something. But he may have questions. Right.
Kevin usually, Kevin's usually pretty dependent on what he has.
I almost think the vote's going to be two-two, but I could be wrong, I'm guessing, and I think I'm, for my client's sake, I, I should be, uh, I should probably put the odds in his favor and have five people here. If that, we've waited this long, what's another month? That's kind of what I feel right now. Other ideas? Well, I haven't really heard anything from the board that is, is on like a advising that this is, there's a better layout. Terry had mentioned some things I talked about. I think so.
Andrew, do you know what the house would fall?
You just don't know.
Kevin, well, Gary, we do, we first, uh, we try.
Yeah, and old family.
Because we wanted to work and go lunch, right?
I think I have to wait. I just, uh, I can't decide, so I, and Matthew's not here to ask, I gotta be cautious. Uh, I would have felt, I thought we had a five-member board and we and I didn't realize, uh, I think I'd feel better at this point if either Kevin or Romeo, I don't know this gentleman, or oh, next to you, Robert, who's not, the ones that aren't here, man, yeah, Robert or Romeo or Kevin. But, you know, that way we'd have five. There wouldn't be a tie. I'm just kind of nervous that maybe we might end up with a tie. I don't know why. So, wish you guys wanted to, there's no way around it, so I have to. I have to continue till we get a board. And then I'll come back and I'll try to give you a shorter, now that I know what you want to hear. That's right. Well, I won't say anything if you want to just read what I, I put it all in writing. I mean, uh, didn't I? You like that? I was on, I was in a mood. Okay, well, thank you.
Well, since this is going to happen in June, but there's nothing, I mean, I don't need to come back in June, is my feeling, because it's not like
Well, this, this is fascinating. Seriously, wow, I'm impressed, I'm
Okay, so you're going to continue until June?
I think I have to. Seventeenth.
I move to continue the hearing for case 25 batch 0068, Brady, uh, plain case road, June 17th, 2025, 7 p.m.
Okay, we have a motion to continue the hearing, uh, this hearing is June 17th, 2025, a motion in second, all of the bill.
Okay, thank you. I knew you'd agree on that. See, I get it. Yeah, no research. All right. Okay, well, enjoy. Take care.
Thank you, everyone.
Take care.
Thank you for your help.
Okay, now we're, we're going to discuss, well, there's something on the bylaws, what will we
We looked at them last year and they have a amendment to them. Because number four and then the paragraph after that were repetitious about the drive bys. I didn't end up with a new copy of them, but I've got my note, I haven't and I know you sent them to us, I just didn't print it off. Because I think you're going to change it, right? Because there's a reason you're printing it.
You think that was done in 2024?
2023.
Oh, okay, I was going to say. That's what I had posted, so I just wanted to make sure, nothing was done last year.
If I said 2024, I, I just thought it was, and it's good, yeah, 2023. Does this, does the zoning board ever go like with conservation or, has a sidewalk, do we join them? Or is it a separate thing? I'm just saying drive by here in your bylaws.
Right, it's only our bylaws.
Yeah, but the, do you, are you invited to join the others or instead of while, I think? It depends on the case. If it's something that may come to us for any kind of relief, then we would be able to go to that. But typically, it, what's happening on the same side doesn't usually affect this more than
If you're governing here or governing of a variety, or, let's say, playing with, uh, so we, we kind of stay separate. We have our one meeting in August or something, but I don't know.
The, the only thing I would look at to add into the, um, bylaws or rules of procedure, then, is with the application component of it. Considering the fact that my copy that I received had no, no signatures on it. Is that we, is that we are assured that an application, when it is filed, is fully complete, but signatures that are on there and the places they need to be before they're accepted. That to me would start the, or mean, mean that the application is complete. Nothing should be presented to you along it. There's no signatures on it. And it needs to be the signature and clearly state whether it's the owner or the, um, representative of the owner, and they should have documentation that shows that they're the representatives of the owner. They shouldn't put you in a spot at all of having to chase people, people for signatures.
Right, but I mean, on the, on the one you sent us, you know, did you, you know, from one you sent us, that had, that has the signature on it, the owner's
Yeah, it was correct. I, I wrote the public hearing notice incorrect, so that was actually my mistake.
And, and, um, I think, you know, I think when you have a, a an application, I think, you know, the owner's signature is probably more important than the applicant in some way, because that shows the owner is, you know, in agreement with something.
Well, you can't, I haven't seen how you could do anything with a case that isn't, that doesn't have the owner's input on it.
Right.
You know?
But I mean, our rules say, you know, I mean, that form says owner or applicant. Yeah, so it doesn't say owner and applicant, it says owner or applicant.
But I, I just want it says owner or authorized agent.
Right, or, I think it's a or.
Right, but it, but whoever is the authorized agent would have to have documentation to prove that they are able to be there on behalf of the owner.
Right.
That, I think that is a form in the application, isn't it? Owners, uh, they sign as, as a representative?
Yes, yes, there is. But what, but what I'm saying is that for the application to be signed by somebody other than the owner would have to be that authorized agent. Like, if that wanted to be Peter Landry, Peter Landry's
I see what you're saying, yes. That's, that, you're saying that signature should have been Peter, not Matthew?
Well, Matthew, if Matthew was here, then I would
But he's not, he's not the owner, though.
No, but he was in the applicant, he's listed as the applicant.
Whatever you guys want to make.
The, the application needs to be signed by the owner.
Which is a property owner.
Property owner. And all signatures on the deed, correct, and all, and things, taxes, whatever it's
Or persons.
Uh, correct, and all signatures need to be on all the pages for an application to be complete. And I'd like that somewhere in this application where it says, application shall be, we can make it D. All sig, required signatures must be completed at time of submission for an application to be complete. And I hear what you're saying, that, that it was an asymmetry on the digital? If, if I end up with a copy of it, that, that doesn't have signatures, there's a problem. That means there's two different applications that are filed.
So later, a lot of it's claimed, you know, that she did file in copies now, you know, she gave her the copies to send out instead of her copying, so they didn't sign their copy, so they signed the original one that they didn't sign. So that's how there was, no, no signatures on any of the contracts.
Okay, well then, if, if something like that happens again, where the owners are giving you the copies, and that's cool if we're not having to do them. Um, maybe a little notice that I checked the application, all signatures are in the required place, that's fine. Because when I looked at this, I'm like, wait a minute. How can we even be looking at this case when there's no signatures on it?
Yeah, we can put it in the bylaws, but you, you guys can't, whatever you want to do. I'll, I'll definitely check for them from now on.
Thank you. Sometimes they're so overwhelming, you're like, just looking at all of the content, but and I would be reaching every page in my distance.
So should that be, should what you're saying be put into a motion? So we
Yes, I and I, more or less differ. I move that on the in the bylaws on the application fees and public notice section. Number one, there be a letter B that states that all applications shall not be considered complete unless signatures of the owner and or their representative are on the appropriate pages and with documentation for someone to come together.
You can put owners with an S in front of this.
Yes. Owner or owners.
Because you can't get anything on piece of land, you're a partial owner.
Same.
The other person doesn't agree.
Carrie's making this change.
Okay, we have a motion in a second? Okay, we're sorry, okay. So we have a motion in second on Teresa's, uh, motion. All of the favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Did not see anything else.
So do we need to, to vote on do we need another vote on just the approval of bylaws with the amendment, or, or we could?
I think we're gonna, are we gonna probably, probably quickly end it in here and then vote?
I think we discussed the
Do you want to?
I don't see why we'd hear.
Vote on bylaws?
Look at everything tonight and get it over and over.
Okay, so we'll, we'll have a vote on the bylaws as it ended?
So, yeah, I'll move to, to vote on the bylaws, um, for 2025 as amended.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion in second to vote on the bylaws as amended for, uh, 2025. All of the favor?
Aye.
So they may approve break?
Yep.
Possibly change time, Carrie.
Oh, yeah, the, the, yeah, the time change on the meeting, I guess playing what meeting, what, 6:30 now?
They changed it to 6:30. I just figured, I just checked.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have, we don't have too many lately, that was Yeah, 10:30. Party would have been a half hour late.
You're right, I, I was, I keep really making my stuff.
You make your own?
We'll all be confused, we'll make so we'll keep it at seven, no matter where you are.
Actually, I prefer seven. Everybody's changing it to six and 6:30, I didn't know.
Yeah, I know, it's so, so we'll keep it at seven.
I understand why they're doing that.
Oh, I see, yeah, yeah. Every week is a late night.
Master plan, too. Yes, watch it.
Okay, so we'll stay at seven. Do we have a business?
Yes, there's two sets of minutes, the 18th and the 29th.
Okay, we already
I didn't see anything on the March 18th side, but I do have a couple of questions with the 29th.
I do have some for March 18th.
Okay.
Okay, so we're on the eight?
Eighteenth, okay.
So line 82, um, I believe it was Romeo that made that motion, I can remember.
Are you on the 18th?
Yes.
Yeah, I think it was Romeo.
Yeah, I think so.
Did you vote, no?
I did.
Right, so you're probably beating up that motion.
Yeah.
Pretty much how I knew.
Yeah.
It's funny, because when I read that, I'm like, oh, scary.
Okay, which contrary.
It's a new way of thinking.
Well, do you have any other? Do you have anything else on which to do? Nothing? Okay, do I have a, a motion to approve the limits of, uh, 318?
So I moved with the change, mind you, during.
Okay, so we have a second, Carrie?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second to approve the minutes with the changes for lots uh, 18, 2025. All of the favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we're moving on to the 429 being, this was the, uh, that we did, we had.
It, there's no numbers listed here for us to look at as far as the line goes.
That's good, I did do it, I did have that, but it's
Oh, but, but the reason I said that is because I can't tell you where I want to go. It's where it states what I stated, um, and there, um, it's where it states what I stated, um, and there, um, the two individuals that already spoken, that next line, the driveways went off the focus, third key little area was, and solely, solely should not be capitalized there, on that, I passed my vote as a denial, they don't need that on there.
Okay.
You didn't go through the, through the secretary, the woman that's doing the?
No, she doesn't, she wasn't there, so she wouldn't have.
What's that?
So there's no video for her to watch.
No, there was no video to watch.
Everybody did film, like, pardon, are we on the twenty-ninth?
Yes.
All three members.
Did a good job, we're giving a compliment, thank you. And then, on the line above, the chair, uh, the chair, Terry Bonner, it, it says, it starts with Stevens Hill Road, that, it should be, are, are only, not were, only fifty feet from the road. Many, many other houses on Stevens Hill Road that are only fifty feet. There's also a spelling here in my name, three times, twice.
I missed your name, I, I looked.
Did you type these?
I did.
I didn't, I see. I see, Terry.
I know. I looked at you, now, I went, I went through the old minutes and I, I looked at your spelling and.
Looked at the page before.
I must've missed it, yeah, but I didn't, I was looking at, I don't know what I was looking at, I think I was looking at the, uh.
It's often this, don't feel bad.
Yeah.
That, living there, but.
You're gonna hurt my feelings, I'll never do the minutes again.
We won't spell.
Very sad shape, yes. I had my wife look at them, too, and she said, no, they're looking, not, you know, you.
Oh, wait, and then I, I, I did at least the seven minutes.
Okay, so there's no other changes or nothing?
Move to prove with the changes?
Oh, I spelled my name wrong. Okay, so we have a motion in a second to approve the minutes of, uh, four twenty-nine.
Who seconded it?
Yeah, okay, so all those who favor?
Romeo had no comment, I'm not sure I believed that.
Yeah, Romeo, no, that required.
Yeah, I was, I was surprised.
Yeah, he was.
Yeah, yeah, since you all seemed to be pretty, and I completely forgot about the meeting.
Yes.
Even though I prepared myself.
I know, we were ready for you, I said, Bonnie, should we be here?
I know, I even met with them.
I went down the hall.
I went, I drove by, and I was, I mean, I did everything, I, I, there was some crisis in my life that day. And I was gone. So you, but you voted the way I would have anyway, okay, that's good enough.
Yeah, we all did.
So who seconded the motion? I will, okay, there it is, all right.
Okay, so a motion in second?
Yes.
All those who favor?
Aye.
That brings us to the last thing, which is, we don't have anything else, or we have other things, right?
No, we're done. Do staff member updates, is that?
Yeah. Do you have any staff member updates?
I could take new classes.
Oh, good.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, it is helpful? Very helpful, I've learned a lot.
Good.
Yes, a lot. I did a half-hour lot line, no, an hour-long lunchtime lot line adjustment, which was good for me, and then I did an all-day Saturday, um, zoning, you probably saw that. Parts of that worked very easily, and then I took a not very good zoning thing, lunchtime, it was like, whoa, 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 too much, too much. And so there's another zoning one coming up in June that I signed up for.
Okay, is, is that in person or online?
They're online, it's easier that way. Yeah, it's, very, very informative here.
Good.
That's how I learned about many things.
Well, it, like, cluster developments. Everybody thinks it's so easy to just jump in, it's not, it needs to get educated.
Cluster of open space.
And, and, and one of the things that they discussed, because they're like, for this Saturday, only like, maybe seventy participants, just in zoning, so there must be a whole lot of new zoning people, but they were talking about going by the property, and it was led by a couple of lawyers, because they said that we're basically the judicial of the, the town, yeah, and so they said that it's perfectly acceptable, but do not go on property, just drive by and look at it.
You can.
Well, they signed a slip that says, we can walk on it.
If, if, if in their packet it says that you can.
We must have to have permission or something.
We did.
Yeah, we have a slip they signed, yeah.
Wasn't signed on these, but most of the time it is.
Well, I think it's probably signed over a week.
Because with conservation, we've done a number of sidewalks, and we also, we have co-joined with planning, and I'm just wondering, why not all three branches get together? If there's going to be a sidewalk, there must be some interest or concern, that's all, but it's already scheduled.
We needed invitation.
We would. It, because otherwise, I mean, there's, if there's no reason for us to be there, you're, you're not gonna find any others, or, yeah.
Right, and, and I always look at, that we should somewhat stay out of that, because somebody might come to us, come there, eventually, and then we're like, we've already devolved from that, and so.
Okay, that's not always a problem, I mean, because I was on both courts.
Right.
It's, it's, and sometimes it was helpful to have a little insight as to what was going on with the case, but, um, it, it, I just found it interesting, in a way, that it was quite a discussion with the lawyers and, and, and questions from the participants in the chat, you know, cited a couple of things, and said it was a good idea to at least have an idea of what you're talking about. Absolutely.
And then you'll get another one that would give you.
I'm sure, well, they were saying there's a lot going on at the state level, and some of these things that have been true for a long time may no longer be true, and then to keep your eyes open. Yeah, if anybody isn't looking at the legislative activities, you guys should be, because there definitely, as I've said a couple of times, looking to take away a lot of the power of the towns with regards to, um, zoning. Well, the one thing we've got going for us is, we don't have municipal sewage and water, so we basically have to have a two-acre lot to go with the sewage element, and it's, it's, it's not a law that we have a two-acre.
What's that?
It's not, there's no law that says we have to have a two-acre lot. Uh, I think we, some of them.
No, you can, we have the open space development.
Well, that's, that's different, because you're setting aside a large chunk of that.
Well, you can get a, 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 a,
a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a,